In our need, we turn again to you. We put our faith in you because you have proved your faithfulness time and again. Father, if it's your will, we pray an end to this pandemic spreading across our world. Remembering all who have lost loved ones and praying for those seriously ill at this time. We pray for our doctors and nurses and all of the caring professions who work to help and support people as best they can. Let us remember those working behind the scenes, samples confirming the results, giving information to patients. We pray for those trying to understand this virus better, working to create an effective remedy. We pray for our government as they work with the best medical advice in guiding us on how we should respond and what action we should take. We pray that these guys land to be taken seriously and that all would put them into action. May this crisis bring out the best in us, not worse. Help us to live by faith and not by fear. Father, we ask that you hear our prayers at this time. Strengthen us so that we may carry on our lives as the best we are able. Looking out for others, showing love in action, being faithful in prayer, and bringing encouragement, hope, and peace, always trusting in you. These prayers we bring to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Bolden. City Secretary, are we ready to proceed with our meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I will now open the meeting of May 19th, 2020, and call it to order. And let's see, our city secretary, did we have anyone contact you about speaking in open forum?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then we will move on to our consent agenda. And if any council member would like to remove anything, they may do so now. If not, we will, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is presented.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. For our regular agenda, Agenda number five, the city secretary will administer the oath of office to our newly elected city council members. Ms. Vincent, turn it over to you.
Good evening, Jan Vincent, City Secretary. We had two positions that we were... I lost all my hair just for a second. We're going to administer the oath of office to the newly elected council members for Southeast Ward and for Southwest Ward. Neither had an opponent running against them. And so, not for any other reason than Mr. Bolden's paper is in front of me. I'm going to start with Mr. Bolden to read the oath of office. Raise your right hand.
Okay, you want me to go ahead and read?
Please, sir.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Royal Boad, do solemnly swear, all firm, that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member of Southeast Ward of the state of Texas and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. And it has a spot for Mr. Bolden to sign, which we will get him to sign that as soon as we can and get that in our records. Congratulations, Mr. Bolden.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, you too have your oath of office.
Yes, I do.
Could you read that for us, please?
Certainly. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, J. Anderson, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member from Southwest Ward of the state of Texas and will do, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Thank you, sir, and congratulations to you as well.
Thank you.
Okay, and I would like to add my congratulations to both of you. You are both very good to work with on the council, and I am privileged to have you sitting up there, or to be sitting with you on the dais.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move to Agenda item number six, which is a public hearing. And since, and so how this is going to work is our city planner is going to give a presentation on this particular public hearing. We will then have public comment, and then we will move to council for any comments or questions. Are there any questions about that procedure? Okay, so our first public hearing is the ordinance approving a request for a specific use permit to allow for a mini warehouse facility in a B2 general business zoning district. So, Ms. Chafin, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, Elise Chafin, City Planner, and I am going to share my screen now. Can everyone see my screen?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, okay. All right, so Mayor, as you stated, this is a request to allow mini warehouse self-storage facility in a B2 general business zoning district, located at 6825 North Street. Per the zoning ordinance, a mini warehouse facility is allowed in the B2 zoning district with approval of a specific use permit. And this process allows city council the opportunity to review and impose any conditions if necessary on such development. The three phases, the first phase consists of the three existing structures, showing this building's A, B, and C as outlined in blue on your screen. And the second phase includes four structures being shown as built, being shown as outlined in red. These buildings are currently under construction. And then the third phase is shown as Building E, and it's outlined in green. Just to provide some background, permit plans for the first and second phases of this development were submitted and permitted for construction in April of 2017 and December of 2019, respectively. And during both of these time periods, there was some staff transitions and planning department. And so, therefore, staff is retroactively requesting approval for the specific use permit for all three phases. The property is that is zone B2. This district is intended to accommodate those business activities that are oriented towards the automobile or whose operations they require limited truck access. The property to the south is zoned both B2 general business and R3 to family. The property that's zoned B2 is currently being used as a beverage warehouse and distribution facility. And the property that's owned R3 is developed as eight single-family homes. The property to the west is zoned I1 light industrial and is vacant. The property is bounded on the north side by Ernst McLean Road and on the east side by North Street. The future land use plan does designate this property as commercial, just consistent with the current zoning of the property. As I stated previously, the mini warehouse storage facility is allowed in the B2 general business zoning district, but with the approval of the S U P. And approval of the S U P would not change the land uses that are permitted by the underlying B2 zoning district. So, it would be consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use map. When reviewing an application for a specific use permit, the following conditions shall be considered, and these are outlined on your screen, and I'll just go over them briefly. They include compatibility with adjacent land uses, providing for the orderly growth and development for sound reporting, ensuring adequate infrastructure such as utilities, roads, and drainage, include the design of drives and parking, prevention of nuisances, landscaping, and then, of course, the proposed use being in accordance with the comprehensive plan. In general, are often met with objections due to concerns of aesthetics and hours of liberation. These facilities generally generate little traffic in comparison to some of the other land uses that are allowed in that B2 zoning district. They typically have very few employees on site at one time, and so you don't have that crowd of customers or that influx of vehicles at one time. The office hours for this facility are your normal, kind of nine to five, Monday through Friday. They are open Saturdays, nine to noon. The facility is gated, and the access is restricted between the hours of 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. And this reduces the opportunity for any noise or light nuisances during the evening hours. Additionally, the western portion of the property, and you can kind of see it on your screen on the left side, is being utilized as the site's permanent onsite detention. And this area includes several large mature trees that create a natural buffer to light the noise between the residential neighborhood and the commercial development. And because it's being used as detention, this area will be maintained in its current state in essence and perpetuity. Staff finds that the land use is low intensity in nature and is compatible with the surrounding properties, including the single-family development to the south. These are just some site photos that were taken at the end of the cul-de-sac on Rocky Lane. This shows you the existing fence that was installed with the first phase of the development. And then you can see the natural buffer that's been preserved along that property line that backs up to the single-family neighborhood. And this just gives you an idea of how well that storage facility is already screened from the residential area. In conclusion, staff finds that the request meets the review criteria outlined in the zoning ordinance and does recommend approval of the specific use permit. We did send out 13 notices to property owners within the 200-foot notification area. But as of date, we haven't received any responses in opposition or in favor of the request. This item was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on May 11th, and they did recommend approval unanimously. That concludes staff's presentation, and I believe Mr. Blacklock, the applicant, is also in attendance, should council have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now hear from Mr. Blackwell if he would like to speak. I will open the public hearing, that's what I need to do first. And because I believe he may be the only person that is speaking, we can hear from him now, if that's all right.
Sure. Hi, my name is J.D. Blacklock. We've already built a facility there, and we'd like to add on some more self-storage buildings. We're trying to be the nicest, safest, cleanest self-storage spot in town, and I hope we've done that. We're going to continue to try to meet that goal. And the expansion is adding some more trees and green space along with storage buildings and kind of keeping the same look that we've gone with. So, happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions at this time? Okay, I'm seeing shaking heads, which is good. So, Mr. Blacklock, if you could stay on the line while, in case we do end up having a question, we'd appreciate it. So, thank you very much. Counsel, questions or comments for Ms. Chafin? Shake your head no. Everybody's good, up and down? Okay. I did have one question. Let's see, did P and Z recommend any restrictive criteria?
No, ma'am. They recommended approval as presented.
Okay, then if there is no discussion, Chair will, I close the public hearing, and Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass Agenda item number six as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those, any opposed? No, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Blacklock. Okay, so we will move to Agenda item number seven, which is another public hearing. Consider ordinance approving a request for another specific use permit to allow for garden shop and plant sales.
All right, thank you. This request is, again, for a garden shop and plant sales facility located in a B1 local business zoning district. Property is located at the northwest corner of Appleby Sand Road and East Austin. Per the zoning ordinance, the S U P process allows city council to review such proposals, determine if there's any additional conditions that need to be placed on such development. The development will utilize the existing drives and parking area that you can see that along that hard corner of Appleby Sand Road and East Austin. And the access drive from East Austin Drive will be restricted to exit only. The applicant also proposes to preserve a number of the large trees that are existing on site. And the outdoor sales and display area, as well as any additional parking, will be located along those eastern and southern boundaries adjacent to the street in order to direct commercial activities away from that neighboring residential subdivision. The proposed garden shop will include outdoor display and sales of plants, gardening tools, trees, planting and potting mixtures, landscape rock and decorations, and other such landscaping and gardening supplies. These are a few images that were supplied by the applicant of a similar establishment to give you an idea of how this development might look as far as layout and display and some of the materials that they'd like to display as part of their business model. This development will also include covered and uncovered display areas. The property located north of the subject property is zoned B1 local business and is currently being used as a hair salon. The property, a portion of the property to the west is also zoned B1 local business, but is currently vacant. And then the remaining of the property to the west is zoned R1 single-family and is developed as a single-family neighborhood known as the Colonial Hills subdivision. And the subject property abuts Appleby Sand Road to the east and East Austin Street to the south. The future land use plan does designate this property as single-family residential, which is described as your conventional one-family detached dwellings. But although, while the future land use plan designates the area as residential, the subject property and the surrounding properties at the intersection are zoned local business, which is appropriate in close proximity to single-family as these districts are intended to accommodate those business activities that serve the day-to-day commercial needs of nearby residents while not adversely affecting those neighboring areas. The proposed land use is low intensity in nature, and the approval of the specific use permit wouldn't change the underlying land uses that are permitted in that existing B1 zoning district. Additionally, the proposed development does further some of the goals as outlined in the 2003 comprehensive plan. It promotes growth inward by encouraging infill development where appropriate in regards to existing facilities and infrastructure, which this site does have. It also furthers the goals of avoiding undesirable development outcomes by coordinating development with the physical environment to preserve and protect natural features. And the applicant is doing that by preserving a lot of the existing vegetation on site in order to create a natural buffer between the commercial activities and the residential neighborhood to the west. Again, when reviewing an application for a specific use permit, the following conditions shall be considered. And I won't go over these in detail. They are outlined in your staff report, but these include compatibility, orderly growth and development, supportive facilities, drive aisles, parking, nuisances, lighting landscaping, and then compliance with the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned earlier, staff finds that the land use is low intensity in nature and that the applicant is proposing to reduce some of the potential nuisances to the neighboring residential neighborhood by preserving those large trees that you see on the conceptual site plan. The applicant is also proposing, again, to locate the majority of the commercial outdoor activities away from the residential area along the eastern, sorry, the eastern and southern portions of the property. And so, staff finds that the development will be compatible with the adjacent land uses and will not interfere with the current quality of life of that abutting single-family neighborhood. In conclusion, staff finds that the request does meet the review criteria as outlined in the zoning ordinance and recommends approval of the specific use permit. We did send out 14 notices to property owners within the 200-foot notification area. We received one response in favor of the request and two responses in opposition of the request. The responses in opposition were citing specific concerns related to drainage in the area. And the responses that we did receive, we forwarded those to council for your review and consideration. The two individuals that contacted us to express the concerns about the drainage are residents of the neighboring Colonial Hills subdivision. And both of them spoke at this item at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that was held on May 11th. And I believe they also signed up to speak on this item during this meeting, so you'll be hearing from them later. But just to summarize some of the highlights, there was a lot of, there's a lot of discussion between the commission and the residents and staff about what was being proposed, and specifically staff's role in ensuring that the development wouldn't negatively impact their properties in regards to drainage. These residents have had issues with drainage in their neighborhood in the past, and they wanted to make sure that the proposed development wouldn't compound in an existing or pre-existing issue. Steve Bartlett, our city engineer, was in attendance, and he answered a lot of these questions in regards to drainage. But in essence, what we communicated to the commission and to the residents was that part of the city permitting process includes the review of site plans and construction plans that illustrate how the development will manage that drainage on their property. And that helps staff ensure that the development meets city standards and doesn't adversely affect those neighboring properties. And we can speak to that more after the public hearing, if you like. I know that Steve Bartlett, our city engineer, is in attendance as well to answer any specific questions regarding drainage. That concludes staff's presentation. Mr. Schubert and Ms. Harmon are in attendance as applicants, and they are also available for any questions.
Thank you very much. I will now open the public hearing. For those of you that are going to speak, the city secretary will identify you, and if you would please give your name and address, and we will hear those comments now.
Okay, we're going to call, we're going to call in Janet Fults, F-U-L-T-S. So, give Michael just a second to call her in.
Thank you.
Do I have to hit the phone thing? Hello? Mrs. Fults, this is Jan with the City of Natchitoches. We spoke earlier.
Yes.
Okay, you are live with our city council in our public hearing, and Mayor Brophy will speak to you in just a second.
Yes.
Mrs. Fults, thank you for calling in, and we have opened the public hearing. So, we are hearing comments for and against this particular proposal. And so, if you would like to share your comments now with the council, we would be happy to listen to you.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Janet Wyatt Fults. My address is 3316 Colonial Drive, and I am speaking about the erosion issues incurred on my property as a result of ongoing water and sand runoff from the lots on Appleby Sand Road and East Austin Street behind my property. And I know that we have had torrential rainfall recently. However, the drainage issue is an ongoing problem. And the homes on Colonial Drive are not seen because of dividing fence, but everything, everything that happens in the field of Appleby Sand Road and East Austin directly affects my home on Colonial Drive as well as other homes on the street. And I've spent $6,000 plus on a drainage system, which has been updated and/or enlarged five different times in addition to the money spent for cleanup after each heavy rain. My neighbors have actually spent more than I have on their retaining walls or drainage systems. And so, you can imagine, if you had a working drainage system in place and something is done on the other side of the fence that's beyond your control, that ruins your system, and you have to start all over again or you have to improve or tweak or spend more money. And I had a local engineer, Milton Moore, he assessed my situation in 2009, and he said, in a quote from his letter that he gave to me, says, "Any change in the use of the property behind your home would certainly require a drainage review and plan to protect you and others from surface water damage." And when I've spoken with someone in the city in 2004 and 2009, I was told that once the property sells, it's the new owner's responsibility to do something about the drainage problem, and that I would need to speak with the owners or get an attorney when they're getting a building permit and take them to court. But I don't want to take anybody to court. I just don't believe that the potential owners know what the homeowners on Colonial Drive are going through. And I emailed some pictures to Ms. Chafin, the city planner. She showed them during the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. They were televised, and although you don't have them today, I think she also emailed them to the city council members, so you could see a portion of the problem. Kay Sopperman came by, and he said that we're about 15 to 20 feet down from the top of the hill. And it's just an ongoing problem. The back of my garage, the front of my garage, which faces Colonial Drive, is eight feet up. I can bump my head on the back of my garage, there's so much sand deposited, about three feet of sand. And if the city could do anything about the problem, it would help the current residents as well as the potential buyers of the empty lots on Appleby Sand and East Austin, because otherwise, we're just repeating this same cycle. We state our problems when someone wants to buy the lots, and there's really no real correction. So, that's what I had to say today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jan, do we have someone else that would like to speak?
Yes, ma'am, we're going to call in Cindy German. Michael is calling her now.
Thank you.
Mrs. German?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Hi, Mrs. German, this is Jan. We spoke earlier today.
Yes, ma'am.
You are live, and Mayor and council is listening, and Mayor Brophy will speak to you now.
Hi, Cindy, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing very well. We have opened the public hearing, so we are taking, we are listening to comments now about this particular agenda item. So, without further ado, please go ahead, and we will listen to what you have to say.
Well, my property also is beside Janet's, but it's closer towards East Austin. And it, my parents spent over $8,000 on French drains, a retaining wall. All that is given way. That fence that they're talking about keeping the buffer zone, there's probably six to eight inches of debris pulled, washed up against that fence. Another day, there's a storm drain, a sewer drain, actually, in my yard that I talked to Mr. Sopperman about, and the guys came and checked it out, and they said, "Well, this is washing out because of the wash across that lot." And my concern is if they go in there and they pave it, I went up there today. There are no curbs on Appleby Sand on this side. There's a curb in front of the beauty shop, but from there, when you go up to the Minute Market, you make that corner, there are no curbs. There's nothing to defer the water. And it just races against there, and it comes in and filters in behind our houses. And so, it's an ongoing issue, but funds are limited. And when I looked at it today, that area that is already paved, it looks like they're going to have to gonna have to pave a lot more. So if they pave it, it's just gonna make that water go faster, and that's my concern.
Okay. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate you calling in.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Jan, is there anyone else?
No, ma'am. That's all we have.
Okay. And do we have, so we do not have the owner of the property available?
Yes, ma'am. I believe Elena said they were on.
So this is a public hearing, so if they would like to speak, now would be the time for them to do so.
Hi, this is Charles Schugert, and with Janaye Harmon. We're the proposed owners, developers of this property. I appreciate y'all giving us time to speak and hearing the voices, and we're looking forward to making this corner nice again and re-beautifying the area. It's a, there's a large potential there for that area, and we welcome y'all's questions or comments, and fire away if need be. Thank you very much for having us.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is now closed. So council, comments and questions for Ms. Chafin. Mr. Bolden?
I don't have one for Ms. Chafin, but I do have a question about the requirements of a, like, silk-controlled fence. How effective is that? I mean, it doesn't control water, but it does control a sediment. Am I correct or wrong? Anybody can ask it.
Mr. Bolden, you're talking about a silk fence?
Yes.
Yes. Steve, do you want to take that?
Sure.
Before you start, would you just speak to the whole drainage issue in general, in addition to answering his question, please?
Sure, ma'am, absolutely. Steve Bartlett, city engineer. So I've got a lot of experience at this site over the years, met with the residents in the past, and several potential developments over the years. So I've taken kind of a good look at it, and as they told you, they recently met with Case as well to kind of look at the updated version of the issue. So we have, we have two issues going on here. One is pretty severe erosion property to property, and that's what they sent you pictures of and described to you, and it certainly is kind of shocking how much sand is moved. And then the second issue is the water literally just drains this way. So the high point is the intersection of the two roads, and it drains into the subdivision, and that's not something that can be dramatically changed. However, it can be better managed. So that's kind of our approach. We met, I guess, after P&amp;Z. We met with Charles and Janaye both. They came to my office, and we talked for about an hour about kind of specifics of planning their site. And part of that discussion was, we asked them, as soon as they engaged the site after this meeting today, if they would be willing to put up silk fences just immediately before they started construction, to help arrest some of this until they got a chance, you know, to get some good grass cover on the site or develop other developed conditions. And they've, they've agreed to help to be a good neighbor and do that immediately, and also try to do some other measures to slow down any erosion outside that fence line. So we were pleased to hear that. Since then, I've been notified by an engineering firm that they had contacted to try to contract with to do some actual drainage design and a whole site plan here. So that's also good news. They're trying to move forward with doing that. So to answer the councilman's question, yes, the silk fences are generally a temporary measure. They do arrest erosion. They do have to be maintained, because they fill up with silk, and they can fall over. So it's a great construction. It's actually required in most cases on the downhill side of stuff, so we look on those projects for that. So simply in conclusion, the water is gonna go towards the subdivision. It's a matter of managing it. This owner has been very upfront in trying to hire engineering and will bring us plans that will do the best job of managing that, and we feel very comfortable with that. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Roy, are you, anything else right now?
Yeah, well, you know, I didn't, I actually didn't get a chance to. I tried looking at it from old pictures, but is there gonna be, like, prior to, between the property and silk fences, is there gonna be sod laid down, maybe even to slow it down even more?
Well, let me answer this way. I think they owe us a plan, Mr. Bolden, on exactly what they're gonna do, but our early discussions were that they're gonna leave some of the treat buffer there, which is a help. They're gonna do some plantings, which will be a help. They've talked about doing some rocks on the surface to just, you know, be erosion controls, which will also help. So I think there's some tools in the toolbox they can use to try to slow that water and certainly diminish or almost eliminate the majority of that erosion through plantings. They will be putting some new buildings up, as you saw in that plan, and a little bit of new pavement. I know there was concern that if you pave the world, you get more water, and that's true. The initial concept plan we got for the SUP shows that they are well under the 14,000 square foot threshold, which is where we make them do stormwater detention and some other measures. So it is a relatively insignificant, impermeable area that they're adding, but at the same time, I think just managing this whole site is the key to this and to helping the neighbors. So anyway, at this point, I think that will be resolved in more detail as they submit a design plan, Mr. Bolden.
Yes, and the owners, they are agreed to this plan, a potential plan?
Well, the plan will be part of the set of drawings that they submit for permit. So they'll be making proposals to us from a professional engineer on how to do, and it's their whole site, how to lay everything out, and parking lots are included in that plan. And then in order to receive a permit to build this, this site plan is part of that approval process. So yes, they will be agreeing to it by virtue of getting a permit.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I do have some concern about approving this. I'm not against the concept, but I do have some significant concerns about approving this without actually seeing a drainage and erosion mitigation plan. You know, with things in the past, we have required applicants to come back with plans such as the, Mr. Bradshaw, who was doing the dirt mining and so forth on Durst Street, and we required him to come back with a reforestation plan or replanting plan before making that approval. And I would feel a lot more comfortable making this approval if we actually saw some sort of plan for the erosion mitigation, the drainage modifications, and an exact amount of additional impermeable pavement that's going on, because that will drastically alter the amount of runoff that is already an issue, obviously.
Okay. Mr. Man, do you have any questions? Gar?
In general, I really like the idea. I think part of what's, I feel the same pain. We've got the same issues, the same type of sand right around our house, and I've spent a small fortune trying to remedy that, so I feel the pain. I think a lot of it, in my opinion, just looking at and tromping around on the site, is just that it's, there's nothing been proactively done to mitigate that. And so that's a lot of the silt issues, in my opinion, and I'm not an engineer, so I'll leave that to Steve and Case. But I really, when I look at that site, it's not a great residential site. It's definitely a better commercial site that fits with our long-term plan. I think this is the lowest density that I could possibly think of, and so I hear you, Jay. I think that's, I do see with the, gosh, I forget exactly what the total calculation, something less than 14,000 square feet, but just looking at that site, I like it a lot better than another gas station or something along those lines.
Absolutely.
And so I really like the concept. I really like what's going in there. I don't quite have the same heightened level of concern, because I think doing something is gonna be substantially better than even what it's been for the last, you know, since time began, I guess, with nothing there, and that sand is being pulled down into Ms. Fults' yard. That is a tough deal. I can appreciate that. So I do have concerns, but I do think even doing something intentionally takes us a couple steps further in the right direction.
I agree completely. My concern is that we don't have any idea exactly what that's going to be, or to what degree it's going to be done. So there's no notion really of exactly what is going to happen there to alleviate those issues.
Understood.
Mr. Bartlett, what Jay is saying about the degree to which something can be done, can you speak to that?
Probably at a high level. And let me comment on the dirt pit project, which was also an SUP. And Jay, you're very correct. We had them submit grading plans. There was no next step with that project. In other words, there wasn't a building construction permit, you know, that would be forthcoming, which would have, so in other words, after we finished the SUP process, we were done, and they were gonna turn it into a dirt pit. So you guys certainly had that as a requirement, absolutely. With any SUP, and Elena can shake her head at me if I'm wrong, but with any SUP, you basically can condition this within reason however you want. So you absolutely can do what you're asking, Jay. What I will tell you, though, this is a different series where they're contemplating purchasing the property for this use, which I don't believe has been done yet. And so there's another step where this control is in place to monitor that drainage and their erosion within the limits of our ordinance. So I think that's why you haven't seen anything, is this one really has a two-step approval to guarantee that that happens, again, within the limits of what our ordinance has caused them to do. And so I think it certainly is your option to do that, but it's not a property that they don't own yet either.
Is it my understanding that we will have another opportunity to look at this before providing the ultimate special use permit for any construction or the proposed usage of the property?
Elena, you can jump in, but I believe tonight is the approval. Is that correct?
Yes, tonight is the zoning approval for the specific use permit, and then once that's granted, the land use in the site plan that you approve will get adopted as part of that ordinance. And so while the site plan that's been submitted that you're looking at, it's not a full-blown civil building permit site plan, but the size of the improvements that they're showing and the location of those improvements are going to be restricted to what's being presented tonight. And so they're gonna be limited in how much additional parking they can provide, they're gonna be limited on the size of the outdoor display area, and they're gonna be limited to how much development activity can take place beyond that natural buffer that they're showing. So while it's not to the detail that we would permit it for construction, it's pretty close to how it's gonna be built out.
Right, right. I have no doubt about their good intentions, but at this point, given that they are good intentions only, I'm a little uncomfortable with the approval of it. And I had one other question, and that is the south exit on the turn of the intersection there. Is that going to, that looks like it could potentially cause a traffic issue, and I just want to make sure that that has been possibly looked at as well.
Yes, I'll speak to that, and then I'll elaborate. So that driveway off of East Austin Street is going to be restricted to exit only, and that's shown on the site plan. And specifically, we asked them to impose that condition because of the proximity of the driveway to the intersection. So understanding it doesn't meet the spacing requirements, so we're gonna restrict it to where it's exit only. And Steve, if you want, I can let you speak to that further if you like.
Sure. And Jay, as you remember, there's a dedicated turn lane, you know, through that corner.
Yes, yes.
A yield turn lane.
Yeah, that's really why it concerned me a little bit, is because of the dedicated turn lane.
No, absolutely. It's a good concern. So Case and I went out, literally parked on the side and stood there, and I think he tried to push me into traffic, but that's a different discussion. And so we saw that vehicles were still probably going 20 miles an hour through that turn, which is much faster than you would expect in a normal right turn. And so we felt that allowing two-way traffic in that drive would double the turning movements and double the hazard level. And so exiting traffic has a much better chance of pausing and working between those cars. So we felt that that was a comfortable compromise for safety. The, Charles and Janaye agreed that, you know, to a one-way drive as part of that conditioning of the SUP. And so we feel like it's the safest condition we can get there to have some form of driveway on Austin Street. So I think it was a good compromise.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And as to the drainage and erosion issue, I will say that if Mr. Bartlett will give me his assurance that whatever plan is come up with will actually do something to alleviate the, both the drainage and the erosion issue, then I will hold it over his head if it doesn't.
I am not answering that, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Amelia?
Yes. I agree 100% with Jay, except for the last part about holding it over Mr. Bartlett. I do agree that it's, it feels premature at this stage. I agree, I absolutely prefer it to another gas station. I think that it's a great and exciting thing to put in that corner, but it feels premature to do it without seeing exactly what's gonna be done and then hearing a reassurance from you, Mr. Bartlett, regarding, you know, how sure you are that it's actually going to do what it's meant to do. And so I'm inclined to, just like we did with the Durst property with the sand, to wait to see exactly what those measures are, as opposed to hearing abstractly about some ideas, and making sure that that's put in the special use permit before we approve it.
I would think that when someone is planning to purchase a property to own a business, it's very difficult to spend money, additional monies, having plans, and I'm sure that may be their intent before they actually purchase the property. And that's a big chance, a big risk to take. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that they do have it under contract, and I can let you have to speak to this as well. They do have it under contract, but they haven't spent the money on hiring full-engineered plans, because again, you're right, that is an additional expense, especially not knowing if they don't have that, you know, preliminary land use approval. Mr. Schugert and Ms. Harmon, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And that is correct. We have spent money on engineering, but we have not spent the excessive amount of money that's required for the site plan yet. Visiting the site, the erosion is a challenge, because it's being used now by non-property owners to drive across the area. So there are some things that will immediately stop upon the purchase of the property prior to any building and prior to any approvals, as we've discussed about the silk fencing and things of that nature. So yes, very valid points. We are willing to work with you and make this right. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a challenge, but we're willing to put the money in on the front end after we get through this process, is the best answer, yes.
Thank you. And I believe also with what Steve said is that, you know, there's no guarantee that it will be 100% taken care of, but a lot of it can be ameliorated. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Amelia? Want to follow up with anything?
Yeah, is there, I mean, I get the concern of spending a ton of money on a site plan and then coming back to council and council being like, "Yeah, no." I get that, and that's certainly, I'm sure, not anybody's intention. Is there procedurally, that's my baby, is there procedurally some sort of, like, middle ground? And this is, I don't know if this is a question for, I don't know where Mr. Davis went, but procedurally some sort of middle ground, like, I'm thinking something- I'm thinking something along the lines of a conditional approval? Or is it all yea or all nay at this point? Like the two options as we've discussed them so far?
Mr. Jefferson is on the call, but I may be able to speak to some of that. So with the S U P process, you can impose conditions. Usually those are physical conditions that fall back to that review criteria. So conditions that speak to nuisances, infrastructure, things like that. I think certainly the council could choose to table the item to a future date if you didn't feel comfortable moving forward as presented and you wanted to see additional plans. You don't necessarily have to make a motion for approval or denial this evening. You could choose to table the item to a future date to the applicant to provide additional, more detailed drainage and drainage plans. And now I would make sure that the applicant is willing to accept those terms before making that type of motion. But I think that's something that you could move forward with.
Is it my understanding that if we choose to table the item, that the applicant will not have to reapply, will not have to wait a period and reapply, that we can just carry the current application forward?
If... I'm so sorry, I was disconnected. This is Jeff. Am I back with you now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Just to follow up on what Ms. Chafin had to say, you could table it this evening. I would point out that under Chapter 118 of our code, that with regard to conditions, that if appropriate conditions were placed that satisfied the concerns expressed by council, that, you know, you do have remedies with that. So if at some future time, proper conditions are put into place that satisfy the concerns expressed this evening, and you approved this specific use permit in the future, if one or more of those conditions that were imposed were not followed up on or violated, you actually have a mechanism to revoke. You have the power of revocation of the specific use permit. So there are remedies if those conditions, whatever those might be, which were imposed, were not followed.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Amelia. I know Garth wants to say something too, but you go ahead.
I was just going to say that, yeah, I'm aware of the sort of the remedies part of it. It seems like that would be an even worse road for the, you know, hopefully soon-to-be property owners than trying to figure it out on the, you know, on the front end toward the back end, yanking the special use permit because it didn't work out the way that they all said that it would. And so, and to me, what you were saying, Elena, about the... About tabling it, wouldn't that be... I mean, that would be practically the same thing as us saying no until you come to us with a site plan, right? I mean, it doesn't help the property owner in any way feel assurance that this is going to move forward so that they will invest that amount of money in a site plan.
Well, if you deny the specific permit, there's additional consequences that come into play versus tabling it. If you deny the specific use permit, they have to reapply and pay the fee. We have to go through the noticing period. There's a time period between when you deny it and they reapply versus tabling it just continues the public hearing to a future date. And so I think if you're on the cusp and you're thinking, "I don't really feel comfortable with this," but I think if we had this additional information, I would, then you might choose to table it versus just denying it altogether and having them go through that process all over again.
Thank you. Garth?
Yes, my question was for Steve. What I'm curious about is Jay mentioned kind of a middle ground. I appreciate the difference here between the Durs Street property and this one is the second step of approval for construction. What I'm wrestling with and what I'm not quite sure about, I would appreciate some clarity on, is what are the... As far as the steps for control that can be enforced by the city, by staff down the road for approval, is that limited to a certain amount of impermeable surface? Or could there be some sort of a mechanism that requires the drainage proposal by the outside engineering firm to meet your satisfaction?
Yeah, and I hope I'm understanding your question, Garth. I mean, again, I think you can condition anything that's reasonable in an S U P. Back up one section, this is a B1 zone. So there are things allowed by right. In other words, a restaurant without a drive-through would be allowed by right without a discussion by council or P and Z. And they would simply have to meet the parameters of our drainage ordinance to be successful. And so we can hit a middle ground if the owners are willing to submit, not a full-blown civil site plan, but probably a drainage concept plan that shows the features of controlling, diverting, managing drainage and erosion in more of a schematic form might be a reasonable middle ground where they don't have to invest a whole lot. And again, if they were willing to do that and carry the process forward. Would that halfway answer your question?
It does, with or before approval of the S U P? Or is that after approval of the S U P for them to get the permits to proceed?
Well, I guess it could be either and all. We're here as your staff to basically do what you permission this site with. So, and so I think you instruct us how you want us to do that. So it could be a before and after, or say, "Steve, make sure they do this." Then that's what... Then, you know, we follow those guidelines when we do review for permit.
So my question at that point would be to council members Anderson and Fisher, is that the middle ground, the type of middle ground that you all are looking for is some sort of a drainage concept plan that would be approved to move forward to get any kind of permits to actually do anything? Or do we...
That's pretty much where I am, yes. I would like to see something a little bit more concrete or have some guarantee from someone and some actual enforceable language there that would allow that if we cannot see something more concrete in advance. I am all for the project. I think that's a great use of that lot. I think it would look fantastic. I just want to make sure that it's done right and no offense to the applicants at all, but, you know, the vagaries leave me a little bit uncomfortable with it.
So just to clarify, you're comfortable with having a drainage concept plan that is to be proposed to Steve and approved by Steve before construction permits happen? Or do you need to see that before an S U P is granted?
My preference would be to table this and see the plan in advance or at least, you know, a concept of what can be done. But that is just my opinion. If we can get, if we can instruct Mr. Bartlett to require a certain level of development to mitigate the erosion and drainage, then if that's what we have to do to make everybody happy, then I can get on board with that. I would prefer to actually see a plan, though.
Amelia, can... Garth, was that... Or Garth, did you want to talk to Jay some more?
Sure, well, to Mr. Anderson, but also Ms. Fisher. Just thinking through, I'm trying to put myself in their shoes. Because if I have... If I'm in their shoes and I'm trying to decide, they're probably, I have no idea what the option period is on the contract, but I'm thinking there's a lot more stuff I've got to do. Even if it's a low risk, if there's this huge outlying potential question mark, I would probably consider other properties, honestly. And so, but also in the same vein, if we grant an S U P contingent upon any construction permits being tied to the drainage concept plan, then who knows, maybe that's a $50,000, $80,000, some crazy arbitrary drainage system that engineering would have to approve. So I'm just kind of wrestling back and forth with what the best steps are.
Well, to me, it seems better to table this and look for at least a concept on this, a visual concept, rather than granting the S U P with conditions that would then allow us to revoke it if it doesn't work out later. Because then they've gotten an even greater investment in that property by purchasing it and by starting to develop it. And then we have to pull that S U P because it is not living up to what we need it to.
Understood. I'd like to hear from the potential buyers and developers, too, if that is the condition, not a full engineering schematic, but a drainage concept plan. What are your thoughts there? Can you give us some feedback?
I'm not opposed to that. I would have to... We would have to reevaluate the cost of that. The option period is over, so we're still working through the contract phase. If it is tabled, would this be tabled for an additional month? Or would it be tabled for a specific time period, would be my question to the council.
Mayor Bruffey, I assume that we can stipulate the point at which we bring it back to the agenda?
Well, we can. However, they have waited a while and they need... You know, they are anxious to get started. They are very concerned, as they expressed, about the erosion and the drainage. I don't... I really don't think they would be even here talking about this if they didn't intend... I know that you talk about intentions, but with having Elena and with Steve and Case going out there and with them working together, and we do have a drainage ordinance and all of the things we have in place. I know it's like, it's nice to see plans. It makes us more comfortable. But this would be better than leaving the property vacant, according to what we've heard.
As far as I'm concerned, if the applicants are comfortable with accepting conditions on the S U P, then I'm comfortable being in favor of it.
Yes.
As long as they understand the risk to them, that if it does not come up to a certain standard, that there is the chance that the S U P can be revoked.
Yes.
And as long as they're comfortable with that, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah, valid point. Thank you.
Of course, of course. So reasonably, what would that restriction look like?
Candidly, I'd like to hear from Steve on that because he's the one ultimately that would have to approve it that has the hydraulics background, one way or another. That would be helpful, I think, for me.
Certainly, and thank you, Garth. So we've got to discuss a couple of the realities here. The realities are, there is probably a very limited chance that much if any of the storm water can be diverted away from the subdivision. The facts are, they are downhill. And so it's going to be a matter of whether we... And in fact, when I met with Charles and Janey, we actually used this example of whether we collect all the storm water and discharge it in two eight-inch pipes right at the fence. That's something we're going to prohibit because that dramatically exacerbates the problem. Or whether we maintain a good sheet flow and a controlled low-velocity flow, but the water's basically still going to go downhill. The sediment migration and the way we mitigate that could be nearly 100% successful. So I think that'll be our primary focus with the sand out of the backyard and to make sure that drainage is at least reasonably managed heading into those yards. Realize, there are properties south and west of this and properties north of this that are both contributing. In fact, the property north of it is where a vast majority of this sediment has come from. We have other ordinances that allow us to work with that property owner now to try to control that on behalf of these residents. But it's not simply just this parcel or a couple of parcels they're developing. The adjoining parcels will still continue to contribute until somebody does some kind of mitigation on them. So I think if you set up parameters for this, it would be to control sediment on their property to a level that's acceptable in engineering and virtually trying to eliminate it and then to divert and restore drainage to as quiet a state of condition as we can. And that's about as far as you can go. You can't make the water go away.
Right. And the sediment control, the erosion, is really my biggest issue. I am familiar with that lot. When I was a kid, I used to play on that lot. So a friend of mine's father owned it for a long time. So I am very familiar with the layout and exactly what the grading is there. And really, the erosion is my primary concern. And if we can get some, you know, some assurance that we'll be able to control the erosion, I understand that you can only do so much with the water there.
Correct. Okay. Any other comments or questions from council?
I just have just a general question to Steve. Steve, whether there's this greenhouse, the landscape business is built on that property or not, it's not going to enhance the drainage problem, right? I mean, it's still going to be there whether something is built there or not, right?
Yeah, I mean, the drainage problem exists. As you saw the photos today. And the concern is, as we add rooftops and pavement, which they're adding some of both of those, not excessively, that there's more runoff, not less. And again, it's how we manage where that goes and how it goes. But correct, if you leave it the way it is, and I think the mayor said it correctly, it'll be worse condition than this development would be.
All right.
I have additional question, and I don't... I didn't read about it. Is the intention to be open year-round?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay, thank you. That makes a difference. Council, any other questions or comments? Garth, would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we pass Agenda Item Number 7 with the condition that the plan to control sediment is acceptable to engineering.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number 8. Public hearing considering an ordinance amending Chapter 18. Ms. Chafin?
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen now. And all right. Staff is in the process of assisting, or sorry, assessing city ordinances to ensure that they not only meet current developmental needs, but to also recommend economical and modern ways to not only promote smart growth, but to promote compatibility and development within our community. I would like to note that in the future, we will be bringing these amendments forward in the form of a workshop, especially items which may be more complex or amendments that might have the effect of increasing current regulations. This particular item doesn't impose any additional regulations or restrictions on development. It simply provides some additional flexibility and alternatives to the current standards. And that's why staff felt comfortable carrying it forward as written. But in the future, we will have workshops and have the opportunity to garner additional input from council before bringing ordinance forward. We did review these proposed amendments with the city's pre-development review team in order to make sure that the amendments didn't conflict with any other city ordinances and to provide for additional feedback or recommendations from various other city departments. These departments include the fire department, inspections, engineering, community services, economic development, and communications. This is our core pre-development team. And so we'll continue to work with this group as we move forward. And so we'll continue to work with this group as we move forward with these amendments in the future. So like I said, we've been reviewing city ordinances. The particular ordinance that we're considering this evening for amendment is the requirement, whenever you have commercial development adjacent to residentially zoned properties. In this instance, the developer of the commercial property is required to provide a 10-foot landscape buffer along the property, along the common property line between the commercial property and residential area. And then they have to provide either a six-foot wooden fence or a six-foot masonry wall. Staff has identified some opportunities to create some additional flexibility in these standards to help facilitate the development review process and that also serve the purpose of preserving some of Nakadoche's natural resources and promotes beautification. We recommend following changes, they're outlined on your screen. These include the major changes being exceptions and then substitutions. The first one is the addition of an exceptions clause that would allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a waiver of the fence requirement if the following circumstances are provided. And these include properties that abut a natural feature, such as a creek or female-regulated floodplain, or when there's natural vegetation already in place that provides sufficient screening between the commercial development and the residential property. The second is a clause that would provide substitutions to the required fences. This would allow administrative approval of what's being presented as living screens in lieu of a fence or a wall. We provided some, we provided two different concepts. The first one is the evergreen buffer. It's a 15-foot landscape buffer with a double row of evergreen trees that would be planted six feet in height at planting. The other is a hedge wall. It's also a 15-foot landscape buffer with a solid evergreen hedge, again, built six foot at planting. We've also got some additional amendments in this proposal, and they include provisions that would accommodate utility easements that are located in the required landscape buffer or, and, sorry, and provisions that would allow the planting requirements to be reduced by half if the applicant is proposing a masonry wall in lieu of a fence. Oftentimes, what we find is because of the cost, more often than not, developers decide to move forward with a six-foot wooden fence in lieu of a masonry wall, which is fine, but masonry walls tend to be more sturdy, provide for a more effective visual barrier, and just tend to have better aesthetics overall. So next, what we're going to do is we're going to look at a couple of scenarios where some of these provisions might come into play. Having two major creeks bisecting the community, there's several instances in Nakadoche's where a property could take advantage of some of these new provisions, specifically the ones related to natural features and properties that have existing vegetation. But I wanted to take the times to show you a few of those. The first one we'll look at is the commercial property located on the northwest corner of University Drive and East Main Street, where the property backs up to Lenala Creek. These images were taken at the rear of the parking lot behind the main building. On the left, in the upper corner, you'll see the bridge crossing on Main Street, and you see how the property slopes back to the creek bed. The other photo is taken at the same location in the parking area, and you can see just how, just how thick this vegetation is and how it provides just an effective buffer as a six-foot wooden fence does. And this might actually act as an asset for the development. The next property we'll look at, doesn't have any creeks or floodplain abutting it, but it does have a lot of heavy landscaping surrounding the perimeter of the property. You can see on your screen, it's highlighted in red. This is a church, which is considered non-residential development, and it backs up to a single-family neighborhood to the east. So if this property were to, if this were new construction, or they were going to expand, then they would have to update the site to meet our current screening requirements. These images were taken at the edge of the parking lot on the east side of the property, which is the property line that backs up to the single-family neighborhood. You can see how thick and mature the vegetation is. And preserving this area not only provides an excellent buffer and visual screen, but again, just contributes to the overall aesthetics of the development. Next, we'll look at some visual examples of the evergreen buffer. Again, this is the 15-foot landscape buffer. It includes a double row of evergreen trees, six foot in height at planting. The rows would be triangular spaced in order to create a solid screen. And again, this would be along the common property line between the commercial development and the residential, the residentially zoned property. And the next image on your screen is what we're proposing as the hedge wall. Again, it's a 15-foot landscape buffer, but it's a single row of evergreens, again, six foot at time, six feet in height at the time of planting. And this would provide a 100% opacity before issuing a CO. This item was heard at our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on May 11th. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval unanimously of the amendments as proposed. And they were particularly supportive of the provisions that relate to the preservation of natural features, such as creeks and floodways, and allowing personal development to take advantage of existing vegetation to satisfy the screening requirements. We didn't receive any contacts in opposition or in support of the amendments, and I believe we don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item. And that concludes staff's presentation. Available for questions, I'll exit out of my screen.
Okay, thank you. Council, Amelia, would you like to start this time? Do you have any comments or questions?
No, other than, this looks great. I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Okay, Garth?
Sure, I think it's fantastic. I'm curious, some of the eastern red cedar and Arizona cypress, I love those things. Like over by the Sacred Heart Church. But we have really big issues with mites that just decimate those things. But that's not the same species. I'm curious if that's been vetted, if those two can do well here. It's amazing to me, like the Italian cypress or the giant green thugia or whatever, those seem to do really well around Austin or Dallas, but they're just crushed here. And it's rough. I was just more curious about that than anything else. I love the overall heart behind this.
The evergreen trees that we noted in the amendments are already on the city-approved plant list. And so these are trees from that list, but these are trees specifically that could be planted in order to provide the living screen. I know that the plant list was updated a few years ago. And I think the people who were working on it were, did have backgrounds in landscape architecture. And these species were specifically chosen because they thrive in our area. And so I think the plantings that are proposed are, some of them are actually drought tolerant, so they, you know, require a little upkeep and little maintenance. And so staff feels that these will be sufficient. They're not prone to disease, like some of those other species that you mentioned. And a lot of those depend on your region. And so our area is eight hard in this zone. And all of these species are recommended for that, for that region.
Awesome, thank you.
Jay?
I'm all for it, and I love the concept.
Okay, Roy, do you have anything?
Yeah, I love that hedge wall. I wish I could afford one around my property. Not six feet, though, I don't think. But no, I love the concept.
Okay. Well, if no other questions or comments, Chair would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Eight as written.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve Agenda Item Number, oh, you know, well, it's a public hearing, but there's none to speak for or against, so.
No one signed up to speak on this item, Mayor.
And I told you I was going to ask you that, and I forgot. Okay, thank you very much, Jean, I appreciate it. So we have moved a motion and a second for approval of Agenda Item Number Eight as presented. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Nine. Consider approval of a license for Stephen F. Austin State University to use a portion of East College Street for utility line installation. And Mr. Bartlett, you're up again.
Mayor and council, Steve Bartlett. I'm going to try, Elena coached me, so I'm going to try to share my screen as she says. Though I don't do this well, it's her fault. There, can you see that okay?
I can see your must-have.
So you can't see the shared, hold on a second.
No.
Try it one more time.
Ah, okay. There you go.
Okay, is that visible?
Yes, sir.
All right, man, I did it.
Good job.
It took me twice, Elena, but I did it. Okay, so SFA University has really been planning for over a year the expansion of the Griffith Fine Arts Building, which is kind of there in the middle of your screen. And you can see one corner of it is already pretty close to East College. So the larger footprint of the Fine Arts Building is going to kind of push the limits of the room they have on the north side. They've got to run new, what they call, hydronic piping, which is the chilled water and hot water lines. And those are used all over campus from plants to provide heating and cooling for the buildings. And so they've got to run some major lines. Well, they ran out of room, and they approached the city about placing a couple of those lines in our actual right-of-way of East College. So that's proposed some interesting challenges for Jeff Davis, and their legal staff at SFA have worked through some alternatives and come up with a license agreement, which I think you had a copy of in your packet. So as opposed to an easement, this is kind of a different approach. It is a license that gives SFA the ability to use this designated area in East College Street for a specific purpose. And in this case, installing and operating and, you know, maintaining these hydronic lines. The, an easement is different from an agreement. From one special item is an agreement, is certainly revocable with proper notice. So, not that we intend to, but it's a different kind of animal. The hydronic lines then will be placed under the road, kind of in the southern outside lane. So that's what you see hatched here, is that coverage area. It's a short section, it's about 250 feet long in round numbers. The license requires that SFA replace all the pavement, sidewalks, any damage from construction and maintenance to equal or better condition. You know, several years ago, we spent a little over $180,000 repaving East College, and it was pretty and shiny, so they've got to kind of put it back so that it's restored to a really good condition. There's really no notable conflicts or impacts with any city existing water or sanitary lines. They will be crossing a couple. Those will be engineered to avoid each other. Most of our lines are outside this, either south of it or north of it. Fortunately, East College is really wide, a right-of-way, folks. And so we've got lots of room for everybody there. And it was a good choice of a place to try to do an agreement like this. So we were comfortable, after working with their engineer and placing it for this area. And so tonight, for your approval, is really the agreement or the license agreement with SFA to occupy this section. We may work with them on some temporary construction adjustments outside that, so they can get materials in and out. But they intend on trying to place that this summer, if you accept that agreement tonight. And I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Council, anyone have any questions or comments? No one is unmuting, so everybody's okay. Then Chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Nine as written.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve Agenda Item Number Nine as presented. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074, it is now 6:56 PM, and council will be going into executive session. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074, we have returned from executive session. It is now 7:28 PM on May 19th, 2020. And council took no action. So therefore, our meeting of May 19th, 2020 is now adjourned.